You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to the February 13th, 2023 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance and also say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance? And remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to meet today. May we engage with each other with faith and perseverance. May we manage each situation with wisdom and value. And may we speak and serve with integrity and purpose. Lord, we invite you to work within us today. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda is written? Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Our next order of business is our Student Performance. Please welcome the Walker Town Winds.
Can y'all see me? Not really. We're gonna play one more for you. Thank you for having us out today, we really appreciate this opportunity. This is the Walker Town Winds, sort of our traveling concert band, about half or third of the size of the actual group. But we're really excited to be here. We're gonna finish with a nice Happy March. That first one was called, what was it, Majestica. Alright, so a nice fanfare by kind of a newer composer on the scene, he's been a while before, but relatively new. And we're gonna finish with Honor, Honor March by Sandy Felstein and Larry Clark. So we hope you enjoy, thank you again. First one.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you, great job. That was wonderful. Our next order of business is Special Recognitions. Andrew Kraft, Director of Arts Education, will present the Honors Course Recognitions.
Alright, good evening, distinguished board, Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus. Today we are recognizing WSFCS students who auditioned and received a place into the highly selective North Carolina Honors Course. The North Carolina Honors Course recognizes outstanding singers from elementary, middle, and high school choral music programs in our state by giving them the opportunity to perform at the highest level of achievement. This prestigious group performs each year at the North Carolina Music Educators Association Conference held here in Winston-Salem. And Mr. Mabry, our lead music teacher is going to recognize these students now.
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. We are very proud indeed of these students because this is quite an accomplishment going up against all the other Core students in the state of North Carolina. I don't have the number, but it's a lot of people. First person we want to recognize is Audrey Smith from Clemens Middle School. Jude Vermitzky from Metal Arc Elementary School. Miles Griffin from Metal Arc Middle School. Matthew Johnson, also from Metal Arc Middle School. Zaria Middlebrook, also from, guess what, Metal Arc Middle School. Maggie Brown from Reagan High School. Also from Reagan High School, Gabriel Cologne. From Reynolds High School, Mackenzie Clegg. Also from Reynolds High School, Sebastian Ariza. Last but not least, we have a few of our fantastic Core teachers in the audience tonight. If you will stand for a final round of applause with you and your students, we'd appreciate that.
And if there are any proud parents in the audience, please stand as well.
Congratulations, I love it. Congratulations, that's just wonderful. I love your jacket. Congratulations. It's just great, congratulations, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, that's just great. Congratulations.
Wonderful.
That's wonderful. Well, at this time, we have no one has signed up for public comments, so we will move to discussion items. So our next, so our first, our first discussion item. Latrell Adams, Director of SEL and Restorative Practices, will give an update on the Fall Panorama Survey.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So it's always a pleasure to be before you. And again, tonight, I'm going to give you a Fall 2023 Panorama Update. And with me, I have these two amazing gentlemen, Nathan Craver, let's see, you have a long title. So Executive Director, Data Analysis and School Improvement. And we have Jonathan Sidney, who serves as an Assistant Principal at Jefferson Middle School. And so we're gonna just jump right in and hopefully make this pretty painless for you all. We already, as we think about the Panorama Survey, we know that the Panorama Survey serves as a universal screener for culture and climate and supports our schools with school improvement. And so we want to utilize the Panorama Survey and continue to utilize the Panorama Survey for database decisions. And so this is one of those things that we do, the surveys that we do twice a year. So a brief history of the Panorama Survey. We've been in partnership with Panorama since 2017. And when we started with Panorama in 2017, we had about seven schools that we, that seven schools that participated, and that was 2,800 students. And now we're up to over 30,000 students participating in the Panorama Survey. Keep in mind that with the Panorama Survey, that is only administered to grades three through 12. And so K2 does not participate in the Panorama Survey. When we think about our Panorama Response Rates, just looking at over the last, since spring 2022, Fall 2022, Spring 23, and Fall 23, here are our Panorama Response Rates. And so overall, we continue to increase with our Panorama Survey responses. We recognize that with our families, that is still always an area of growth and a challenge for us and something that we're constantly working with our schools and collaborating with our schools on to increase the voices of our families. The survey topics, one of the things that we want to do as a district and as a department is that we wanted to make sure that we maintain consistency within our survey topics. And so making sure that there's minimal changes that take place so that schools have an adequate baseline to be able to track and compare data over time. And so the survey topics for grades three through five, you see that they are self-management, self-efficacy. And then for six through 12, self-management, self-efficacy. And then you see also student supports and environment, what they're asked for in grades three through five and six through 12. So in grades three through five, teacher-student relationships, sense of belonging, school climate, school safety. And then those same questions remain for grades six through 12, with the exception of having diversity, equity, and inclusion added. Now Nathan will come up and share some data, the data overview with us.
Thanks for having us tonight to talk about the Panorama Survey. I'm here to talk a little bit about the data. Just to point out, when we go through the next handful of slides with the data presentation, when we're doing comparisons for this part of the presentation, we're comparing fall to fall. So it's really that second column and the last column is what's highlighted there with the boxes. In a perfect world, we'd see fall or spring, then fall, and then spring, then fall, in a nice line of improvement all the way across. But for school improvement's sake, when we work with schools, we do ask them to kind of look at fall to fall to see, you know, in terms of that time of year, did we have an increase from last year? So when we look here, we see our elementary schools, just a reminder that we do see, we only ask in elementary schools, third through fifth graders. And so when we look here, we did see last year that we saw four domains, in particular, that saw improvement from last fall. And two domains saw slight decreases, you know, school climate was just one point down and a little bit larger decrease there for self-efficacy. And the types of questions we get asked in self-efficacy are questions like, do I know how to ask for help when I need it? And so that's an area we want to continue to help support students on. How do they advocate and how do they ask for help? How do they get help with problem, you know, with homework or math problems or ELA if they need help? So we know that's an area we're gonna try to continue to support folks across the district. As we look at our middle and high school, you can see a similar sort of trend there. We had three areas that actually stayed level from last fall, two areas that increased, and then two areas that had just a slight drop. Diversity and inclusion went down by a point, but you'll notice it's still our highest-ranked category across all of the categories there. And then self-management had a slight decrease. And self-management is those, can I control my emotions when I'm upset? Can I do homework when it's first assigned? That type of stuff within there as well. You can see here, one area that we're exceptionally proud of is our teacher survey. When we offered this to teachers this year, you can see that all categories improved from last fall. So we had some, thinking about it from a district perspective, we had some district strategies that we tried to implement to improve our data, thinking about how we kicked off school with more positive approaches, working with our principals and staff around how do they start off school? How do they create that positive culture and climate when teachers come back? As well as the work that Latrell's team has done in working with our teachers and staff and improving our adult SEL. And so we're really proud of the work that this, the results that have come from that work. The next slide here is staff. And you can see here that what staff is, is anybody in the building who is not assigned students. So a bus driver, cafeteria worker, anybody in the building who works there but does not have students assigned to them as a roster. And so they get an opportunity to answer the same questions in these categories. They just don't get to answer questions about students, you know. So, you know, what do you think about this student? They don't get to answer those questions. We did see three that saw increases. And then, again, we label them as decreases because we want to be, you know, obviously accurate in our data. But as we look across, they're just like one or two points across each of those. So as we look at those, we know what areas we want to improve on, what areas we want to move forward and make improvements. And then our last slide here for the data is the parent survey. And again, we know that we have some room for growth on the number of parents who respond. But still, of the parents who responded, you know, we saw two areas where we saw increases from last fall. One that had a slight drop around school fit, and then school safety stayed the same. So that's what we look at when we look at the different domains. And then as we work with schools, we get into the individual questions and things like that. But we'll now turn it over.
And so one of the things that I'm always really excited about is getting to how schools are utilizing this data for school improvements. And so Jonathan is gonna share a high-level overview of how Jefferson Middle School does this. They do a phenomenal job at engaging all of their stakeholders with the data. So I'm really excited to hear him share, Jonathan.
Absolutely. So if you will just take one and pass it down. Alright, so I have been, I've had the pleasure of working with Panorama since 2017. I was an Assistant Principal, then with the high school that piloted the program. So I've been with this through the entire time. And I have to say that the entire team of leaders at Jefferson is here because we really do believe in this. We have this year about 95%, 96% of students take the survey. We had 95% of the staff take the survey. And our family participation was over 90 families. When we first started at Jefferson, we had about five families that did it. But we have been on the big push here to make sure that we are listening to our families. And the best way to do that is for our families to fill out this survey. All data is reviewed by the admin team to begin with. And then from the admin team, we take all unfettered data to the SIP team. And then from the SIP team, the SIP team presents that to our entire faculty. And we look at trends, we look at comments, we look at what our students, our teachers, and our families say about our school so that we can drive our vision. The faculty discusses this and it is facilitated, a gathering of information is facilitated through that. And where we go next with our students. And I have to say that Panorama has, our Panorama Survey has dictated our theme for the last three years. This year, we figured out that through our work with Panorama, that our students are not very confident academically. And that was proved last year when we got to the end of the year and we started retesting. And we ask our teachers to really work in those remediation moments with our students on their confidence. And out of 130 students, we had 52 that made it across the bar, one of which was non-proficient and made it to a Level 5 two days later. That doesn't come from the teaching that happened in that remediation session. That came from the teachers pulling that confidence out of our students. This survey data is used with the same importance as our proficiency data and as our growth data so that we gain the full idea, not of our stakeholders, we don't call them stakeholders because we're not a business. We call them our village. It is a 360-degree sphere of human beings that we are trying to pull in so that all of our students are taken care of by the people around them. How do we do this? We not only align this with our school improvement goals, this helps us build our school improvement goals. The implementation of universal promotion and prevention strategies. In everything we do, we use this Panorama data so that we know the human being that is sitting before us so that we are speaking and working with that human being. Strengthening Adult SEL, that is massive for us at Jefferson because we know without the adults in our building, we could go nowhere. Increased family communication, that's what you're looking at here. This is, the first page is the fall, the spring of last year. We sent that home to parents in the report card. And then the second page is our updated that just went home last week with our students in report cards. This is what we feel like we needed to highlight and how we needed our village's help. We speak about this every week in PLCs. Our staff-focused groups, our staff really, really talks to us so that we continue to move our school forward. Professional development, we, our entire staff has restorative practices training this year. And we have, we are on our third book study, third year of a book study. The first year was one of Berute Caffeli's books. The second year was Hacking School Discipline. This year is Miseducated, and our faculty is eating it up. Student supports, you know, you can't get a student to learn until you know the student in front of you. Unfortunately for us, we don't run a machine. We don't run a cookie cutter process. We have to know the human being that's sitting in front of us. And that has absolutely changed everything that we do in our building over the last five years. That's it?
Felt like it was a drops mic there. Thank you, Jonathan, for sharing how Jefferson utilizes this data at a very high level. I think that it's important to note that when we think about how we're engaging our village, I like that, I'm gonna start using that, how we're engaging our village and just engaging our students and parents and partners, it's really important for us to think about, again, that as we continue to utilize this survey, where students are able to share with us their school, how they're feeling about their school environment, how they're feeling about their peers, how they're feeling about their teachers, how they're feeling about their own social-emotional learning as well as their wellbeing, that we're being intentional with that. And so, again, Jefferson does a great job with that, but we also have a lot of our other schools in our district that are doing that. When our coaches are going, our SEL coaches are going out, they're meeting and having Panorama data chats that are driving action and driving, they're creating plans with the administrators to support the students and staff. And so you heard Jonathan talk about that this year, their whole staff engaged in restorative practices training that came out of looking at what's needed from the Panorama Survey. And so as we look at those two, that was two full days that their administrative team gave up to be able to send their whole staff through that. We also have schools like Southwest Elementary and Walker Town Elementary who are engaging in Trauma Resilience PD with our team, as well as Adult SEL. We have schools like Wiley who are doing a book study with their whole staff, every other doing bi-weekly book study with their staff, with our team, based on the information in this data. As we look at the student supports that Jonathan was talking about, there's like that targeted learning where the survey allows for us to say, hey, if there's a student that is struggling with self-management or self-efficacy, then our schools are able to do small groups. And so Louisville Elementary does an amazing, amazing job at doing small groups with their students. And so these are just some of the things that are taking place as a result of the Panorama Survey and how we're utilizing that Panorama Survey to drive improvements. We know that sometimes to move that needle, it gets slow, it's slow. We know that sometimes to move that needle, it gets slow, it's slow, but slow and steady runs, wins the race. And so we're working with our schools, and our schools are doing a fantastic job at being able to move the needle and, and improve our Panorama data. And so just some quick next steps for us is to continue to think about what are our glows, what are our grows? From a student standpoint, but from a school standpoint, because again, this, this screener allows for us to be able to take a look at how we're doing as it relates to our culture and our climate. Being able to continue to utilize the data to identify what supports are needed and where, like when we think about our code and those tier-one practices and supports, this allows for us to be able to look at that. We talked about, we know, we know, we know that we gotta continue to figure out how we can engage with our families and even hear more voices from our families so that we can utilize the decisions, utilize even more decisions based on their behalf. And then, just so you all are aware, our next survey is set to start March the fourth through, and this says March fifteenth, I apologize for that, but it will land, it will last until March the twenty-fifth. Because we used to leave the survey open for two weeks, but we extended it open to leave it open for longer. So this year will actually close on March the twenty-fifth instead of March the fifteenth. Are there any questions?
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you, just a couple. So Ms. Adams, how, and I know that you probably, you might have to get this number, but are the majority of our schools utilizing the Panorama data with this level of efficacy like Thomas Jefferson Middle?
So I would say, yes, I could give you, you know, I think that they do it at a very high level with the way that I want for this to be replicated with what you all see here. In the space of making sure that they are sharing it with the, you heard him say, they share the good, the bad, the ugly, right? And so I think that there's still some work to be done to make sure that all schools are sharing it. Once you take the survey, to make sure they're sharing it back out with their families, and make sure they're sharing it back out with their staff, and making sure that they share it out with their students. So I can't, I'm, I'm not gonna say that I feel like all schools are doing those three things like Jefferson Middle School is, but that's something that our team is definitely working with all schools to empower them to do that because this is a model, for sure.
I meant to say this when I did my slides and it just went out of my head. But one of the things that we do ask schools to do as part of their school improvement practice is to look at, within our M T S S model, there are certain data points that they are asked to review. So it's achievement, attendance, discipline, and S E L. And so all schools are asked to look at their S E L data and how it connects to their achievement, attendance, and discipline so they can see that which came first, the chicken or the egg, is it the S E L that's preventing academics or academics that's causing discipline. So they try to look at that and try and find the root calls. So it's part of that process we ask them to go through.
Okay. And then the next, the other question I had was for Mr. Sidin. So what, if, if, could you talk a little bit about the impact of the, the way in which you've gone about utilizing this data on your discipline at Thomas Jefferson?
Well, it has impacted everything. Our data use about our human beings in the building has impacted everything. This year, from last year to this year, our discipline data, our I S S rate is down fifty percent. Our O S S rate is down twenty-five. From two thousand eighteen to today, our O S S rate is down about forty-nine percent. And this is because we are looking at students as individuals and treating them as individual humans, not as the next person, the next product to come through. That is what Panorama does for us. It also has moved our teachers forward in our thought process and how we work with students. Whenever I was teaching, it looked a lot different. Now we know more, so we have to be better. That is the reason why we have done our book studies, that's the reason why we are using this information to look at our theme for the year. That's the reason why we are, we ask our faculty completely, including the admin team, to sit down for two days and work through restorative practices training because that, we thought that that was gonna give us a real, a real push forward. We really, really moved our numbers, discipline-wise, we have moved our numbers, growth-wise, from not meeting growth to exceeding growth in one year. And we're, we believe that we're on track to do that now.
Thank you.
Board Member Kuhn?
First, I wanted to say to Mr. Sidin, thank you to you and the folks at Jefferson. This is great, and I would, I hope that we can have more of our, our schools follow suit in the transparency with families, because this is great. And as a parent, I would love to see something like this come out of our schools more often. And the fact that you're using it to inform your decisions, that is amazing, so kudos to you guys. Thank you for taking the data and doing what it is intended to do. My question is, I know that we talk about how we're going to do better with increasing the numbers for our parents and families to participate. And honestly, if we're, if, if we're honest, we probably need to do better with our staff numbers as well. So can we speak to, or can you speak to how or what the plan is to actually do that?
So when thinking about engaging with, or increasing the numbers for our families, like when we're doing our, when our team is engaging in Panorama data chats with administrative teams, we're, we're asking them to think about how they can infuse the survey into something that's already taking place within their, like within a school event. So if they're having a parent night or academic night, can that survey be a part? Can we have, can we come and be a part of that? Can we, can you have like a computer lab set up where parents can come in? Even even talking about the importance of the survey, that would be an awesome time to be able to share about the survey, something that our team has engaged in and that many schools that have high percentages have also engaged in. I think it was Con Oak Elementary where they, you know, go into the, during the car rider line, and they have tablets, and, you know, there's, the parents are filling out the Panorama survey while they're waiting for their kid to get out of, for their student to get out of school. And so that's something that our team is also engaged in throughout the district as it relates to going and actually being in the car rider lines. And so those are opportunities and, and activities that hopefully will increase parent survey, the parent and family survey. But we're really working with our schools to make sure that they are thinking about how they can infuse it to something that is already taking place. Also, as it relates to staff, we notice a, usually, in most cases, our staff survey is pretty high. Where we have, we did see a little bit of a dip this year, and that's because we made the survey completely anonymous. Before, it was confidential. And so if someone wanted to, like if I wanted to have access to the information, I could, you know, I could get access to the information, I've never done that. But I could have gotten, certain people could get access. This year, we made it completely anonymous, and so that made it drop just a little bit. But with that, like in the previous years, we were able to go and I could say, Mr. Sidin, Dr. Stokes didn't do the survey, right? And so this year, I wasn't, we were not able to do that, but we only noticed a few drops in our percentages with staff. And so typically, in most cases with our staff survey, we're still high in our, our numbers for staff survey. But offering things like incentives and, you know, and those, a lot of our schools engage in those types of activities to support the staff with filling that, filling that out, or doing it during a staff meeting. A lot of our stu, a lot of our schools that have extremely high percentages, they just go ahead and knock it out during a staff meeting and give their student, their, give their staff the opportunity to do that during that time.
Any other questions? Comments?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, Paula Wilkins, Dr. Paula Wilkins, Chief Academic Officer, will discuss the University Instructors Contract and Research Partnership with N C T I B.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. This evening, I want to provide an overview around an upcoming partnership for tutoring services for our middle school students. University Instructors is a partner that the board has previously approved to provide tutoring services in our district. So they are a partner we currently work with that has provided tutoring services related to mathematics in our middle schools. So the focus of their tutoring supports are to look at face-to-face options, to push in for small group instruction. And they provide tutoring services, they train their tutors, they help provide them support around the curriculum. They focus on grade-level specific content aligned to the standards, and it's onsite and in-person. Their model first looks at how do they supplement classroom instruction with a focus on high-intensity tutoring? They do assessments along the way to check students' progress, determine ongoing supports needed, and make adjustments. Along the way in this cycle of support, they continue feedback loops between the school and the district on project, progress. So the University Instructors model, they take eighteen tutors that work about thirty-five hours a week. Six of them will work each at the three sites noted, and I'll give a little bit more about the three sites and how we chose those as a district. Students in those classes will receive tutoring every other day for thirty minutes, and you'll see an example of the alternating schedule for the different groups of students for week one versus week two, and the dates that they'll receive tutoring. The tutors work into different class periods in order to maximize the tutor time and to flip-flop. So for example, one tutor may start support at the beginning of a class period in one class and flip to provide support in the other class at the end of the class period. So how do we get introduced to, we've already been working with university tutors, and this is their model. So we're very familiar with this. So this is an additional layer on top of what we have already started doing related to funding we've had for middle schools. As an expansion in the fall, we were reached out to be a part of a tutoring project to look at high dosage tutoring, its impact, and sustainable models for tutoring. And so the goal was, if we engage in this partnership, what can we learn moving forward as a district to continue tutoring supports that are cost-efficient as a district? So there are three overall partners with this particular initiative. So the Innovation Project, which works with districts to provide support around turnaround and study and research around turnaround support, effective implementation around structures and supports around turnaround leadership. The Personalized Learning Initiative is an entity partnering with the Innovation Project that provides funding and research and efficacy partnering with the partners you see on the screen. And with this particular research option, it's around high dosage tutoring. And then Insight is the onsite or on-district support for technical assistance. So once we identify our partner as a district, they work with us to think about the design, to think about the project coordinator, to think about the support that we provide based on our local context to implement the research study. There are currently three district partners in North Carolina that are a part of this research study. Guilford County Schools, Rockingham, and then us as well, in Winston-Salem, for a sign. So what does the Personalized Learning Initiative do? They provide a multi-year partnership for school districts, tutor providers, and research with two goals. They help us to think about scaling personalized academic supports around high dosage tutoring, and then other models we might need to consider as well. They also help us look at the interventions to ensure that they're supporting students in the way we expect. So the efficacy of our implementation, which a lot of times, we say we implement things and we want to look at the research, but we don't always get to actually looking at the research to say, did it work? Did it give us the intended outcomes? And that's the goal of this particular research project. So what does P L I do to support us in the district? Well, the funding is one piece, that provides support for startup costs, the educator stipends, so the teachers, that classrooms will be impacted because we know it will cause some level of disruption, right? Even though it does not, the goal is to not impact core classroom instruction. Whenever you're bringing outside folks, we know that it will cause some level of disruption. Funding for the tutoring intervention to pay university tutors, which is our chosen partner, a project director working with the Innovation Project, Insight, and other districts, and ourselves. Technical assistance around our design. So before University Instructors was chosen as a partner, they helped us think about, is this the model that's gonna work? Why do you think it works? What evidence do you have? How do we move forward as a district? And then objective research, so we can know what's working, and then a part of a national network of support with both researchers and funders. So what do we receive? I talked about the technical assistance, and a lot of that is around both budgeting for the implementation as well as the scheduling in schools, because each of the schools has different schedules that we have to coordinate and work with. Though they have an onsite coordinator, there are a lot of logistics to work through. Advisory meetings around the implementation and its impact, and implementation plans themselves. You will notice in the M O U agreement, we can receive up to nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And I just want to talk about that funding amount, because what you will notice in the University Instructors M O U or the scope of work, it's about five hundred and eighty-nine thousand just because of our starting time. So if you take that, the number of students served by each school, Flat Rock, four hundred and ten students, Paisley, three hundred and fifteen students, Philo Hill, a hundred and ninety-seven students, for a total of nine hundred and twenty-two students supported. If you divide that number, it's about six hundred and thirty-nine dollars per student. So what are we expected to provide as a district? An M O U with the Innovation Project, a data sharing agreement with the P L I initiative, a designated district staff person, who's Velvet Simmington, who I know she's watching at home. I wish she was here with us tonight, but I appreciate all the work she's already invested to get us rolling. Check-ins every other month with the superintendent, as well as the ongoing regular check-ins with Velvet as our site district person. They also help with the support of three schools. I will note, when we originally had conversations in the fall about this research study, it was only gonna be two schools. We were able to expand to a third school because one additional district did not move forward, which allowed additional funding for us to serve an additional school. So what is the strategy to scale? So there are three types of conditions. So I talked about nine hundred and twenty-two students, all of them will be randomly assigned to one of these three conditions. Either high dosage tutoring, one-to-four ratio, four tutors push in to the classroom for thirty minutes. A sustainable tutoring model, which the ratio is one to eight students, two tutors push in the classroom for thirty minutes. And then the third condition, business as usual. So all of the nine hundred and twenty-two students will be assigned to one of these three conditions. So what's the timeline for activities? The tutoring will start in late February, pending board approval. And then there will be site visits planned for March and April to evaluate our implementation and what we need to do next. There will also be implementation of different research activities, the observation of the tutoring sessions, the tutor surveys, the tutor coordinator surveys, and teacher surveys. I will note that teachers do receive stipends because of that disruption in their classroom just because of the impact of, you know, additional folks coming into their classrooms. That's about two hundred and fifty dollars per classroom. I think that's the overview. How can I assist with questions?
Board Member Kuhn?
I have a couple of questions. Okay. So my first question is, why did the district that was initially a part of it, why did they choose to not participate?
I don't know, and I'm not, I can try to find that out, follow up, but I'm not sure.
Okay. And then in reading through some of the materials, on one of the sheets, it says that the model, the best model is for a one-to-three. And I get that this is, I want to, before I say any further, I know that this is money being given to us, and I recognize that it's exciting and all of that, so I recognize that. I still have questions, so I just wanted to throw that out. It says, "The most significant impact in this model is found with student groups of no larger than three students at a time." But then in the... But then in the, in another piece, it says that it's the one to four and one to eight, and that in the sustainable model with the one to eight, that they will be doing written work and/or online with iReady and Dreambox. So my question for that is, if the best model is one to three, and we're going to be doing one to four and one to eight, and the groups that are in one to eight are going to be doing written work and iReady and Dreambox, how is that different from what they're currently doing in their classrooms already?
So a couple of things to note. When we first started the research design, I think you're referring to the Innovation Project MOU and what you're reading. Is that correct? Actually... Okay. So before I answer, I want to make sure I'm citing from the correct one, which I think... So I will say, for the sustainable model, a couple of things. We know tutors will be a part of it, and that's why the ratio is higher, one to eight, so that's one piece. Knowing that it's harder to sustain a smaller group and to be able to pay that number, the number of tutors based on the size per group of students. The second part, which is a supplemental piece, which would be part of the classroom, what I'm most curious about, is that referring with the iReady and with the Dreambox with the third group that's business as usual? I just want to make sure I'm citing from the correct piece that you're referring to.
This is under the scope of work. It says, "There will be high intensity, high dosage with no more than four students utilizing print materials. And there will be sustainable groups of one to eight, but they will work with print materials and an online platform. Our instructors will be providing support with those students as they work with print materials or with the online platform, either iReady or Dreambox."
So that is with the second group. Of course, that's only one small piece that would be included with the tutors. But remember, there's two tutors in addition in that one to eight model. So what I'm assuming, and I can get clarification, is it would be alternating with the various groups. But let me confirm and talk to Velvet, because I know she's the direct partner and I can send a follow-up. Is that okay? Okay. Yes.
Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Thank you. There have been some insinuations made in a recent online article for journal now. And so I want to ask two questions. How much money is Trisha McManus getting from this contract?
Zero.
Okay. And how much does Trisha McManus compensated for, for serving on the Innovation Project Board?
Zero, as far as I know.
Of course, nothing.
Yeah. Okay.
Zero, my gosh.
Yeah, I was pretty surprised by that. I just have, I'm glad you asked that question, because I literally walked in tonight and someone said, oh, this is, and I was like, are you kidding me? So I will never apologize for getting services for our students. And no, I do not get paid to be on the tip board. It is a not-for-profit that involves leaders across North Carolina. It's actually partners with our state. It's, yeah. If that is the case, I probably need to get off every board that I'm on in our community, because a lot of our, the boards provide services to our children. So that's my answer to that question. It's ridiculous.
This is direct services to children, and that's what we want to continue to do.
Yes, Board Member Watts.
So I'm hearing you say for this school year, so is the plan for this to continue also for next school year? Being we're starting so late in this school year, whether we're the same students cohort or how we move forward for next school year?
So I think that's the next piece we need to figure out. So right now, the goal was to get started based on the funding available, and then to continue to work with the partners to see what opportunities for carryover and extension so that we can look at following students by cohort. So if they're sixth graders and seventh grade, et cetera. So I mean, that's the goal, and I know that's the hope for us. I know there will be some conversation to figure out what is allowable based on this being a grant and when it has to all be expended.
Board Member Wood.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkins. You might have answered this question earlier, and I might have been inattentive and might not have gotten it.
That's okay.
But what criteria did you employ or use in choosing which schools that you were working in?
So every school needed to have a certain percentage of population that could benefit from tutoring. And so as we looked at our data of our schools and performance data from those schools, those schools rose up as having significant numbers of tutors, of students that could benefit from tutoring.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will lead us in the safety grant discussion.
Good evening. We received, we submitted a proposal for a grant on safety, which has been a big emphasis within this district. And the district's been very successful in winning these grants. The submittal was for two point nine million. What was eventually awarded was five hundred thousand dollars, one of the higher amounts you could get within the state. When you look at the specific uses of those things, there are four main categories. One's going to be the iReady, which is the visitor management information system we have. Two is going to be for the radios, which is eight hundred megahertz radio. And that's probably the biggest focus of the grant fund. The fencing, and then the installation of the vestibules, all fit within an overall program that really would address all the goals of the district strategic plan. Because if you can provide that safe nurturing environment, you have a better opportunity to keep everybody focused on what's going on that given day. Any questions?
Okay.
My concern is probably only on the radios. And that's because I've seen the use of them. I've been at at least two schools, and the radios are all in everybody's file cabinets.
Then that's something we need to follow up on and make sure they're being utilized as directed. Because our safety team has a very good plan, because having done this in other districts, they have a very good sound plan. And those radios should be in use all the time. There should not be radios sitting in holders waiting to be charged or something like that.
Because I've seen that in two schools at least.
We'll make sure we follow up with Jonathan on that.
Any other questions?
Now, please note, oh...
Not a question, it's a compliment. I'm glad we're reforging, updating Identikit. That's been long overdue. Thank you.
So one thing you're going to notice tonight, and you'll notice going forward, is the appropriation. That's where you, which is different than we just presented grants to y'all in the past. This gets done so that then I have the authority from the superintendent and you as a board, as you do with the budget. On the budget resolution, it's the same process, but on a smaller scale. So that's why we asked for you to approve the appropriation tonight.
Yes, Board Member Wood.
One question, Mr. Krantz. The, will one of the goals or the purposes of the use of the grant be to maximize, or I guess the uniformity of the visitor management program in all the schools?
Jonathan, would you answer that?
So when I first came to the school district, we had several schools that were using Identikit, and we had a couple of other visitor management systems. And honestly, some schools didn't have visitor management at all. And so I think in two thousand seventeen, the district made an investment to make sure that every school had the same visitor management system, and we chose Identikit at that time. And so, I mean, we actually looked at some different visitor management systems. Identikit has just been purchased by a new company, and so actually their pricing seems to have gone down. And it still accomplishes what we need. So we've invested a lot of money into the infrastructure as far as the hardware, and so we don't want to get away from that. And what some of this money would go to is when you go to some schools, honestly, you see the printers that print the little badges, they're falling apart, and so we need to fix those. And so that's what the visitor management improvements would go towards.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. And last but not least, our superintendent will give us a mid-year data review.
Thank you, and I'm going to move it from over here. I'm going to go quickly through slides, and Kevin and I had already talked that I need to do it myself and not have him do it from over there. It's a lot of slides, so there's some that are going to spend very short time. So thank you so much. This is just going to be a quick mid-year update. We'll do something again at the end of the year, once we get all of our data, as an end-of-year report, probably a launch in September. But this is kind of where are we right now. We've got, with principals the other day, we said, we are kind of in the second half of the game, right? For a school year. And a lot can happen in the second half, but you got to kind of like look at your game plan and make changes if necessary. But as we saw the other night, you can even win in overtime, huh? The winning team. So second half is really important. And so we're going to see data tonight that's exciting, and we're going to see some that's disappointing. We've put it all out there, mid-year data. And for all the data points that are not moving like we need to, we have plans that teams have been meeting and are being addressed as we speak. Because again, we're in February, we have all of February, March, April, May, and then the beginning of June for students to show all that they've learned this school year. So with that said, we're going to go quickly, I'm going to go through the slides. Our vision, we all know, to be the best place to learn and work. We, this is very important to the collaboration, excellence, collaboration, inclusiveness, that we do this every day. We live this out every day. And our core values, also important that we are demonstrating these core values every day. So this is momentum, this is data that you've seen. But this is kind of like ending last year. Some of this data comes after the school year ends. And so just to put it kind of back on everybody's radar, the graduation rate and some of those student outcomes, we had already shared. But that teacher effectiveness, at eighty-seven point five, of our teachers in tested subjects met or exceeded growth. So that's individual teachers. That's really a great percentage of teachers that are meeting or exceeding growth with their kids. So that's good, it's great for our teachers. Now, this data I sent to you all, and I'm not going to spend a ton of time on it, but this is data we really would not have known about until two weeks ago, when there was a national report that was from Harvard and Stanford that showed post-pandemic acceleration and increases. And I mean, I didn't even know this was coming out, and I was in a national meeting, and the executive director from Council of Great City Schools called out our district as great job on your recovery. And I was thinking, what is that? And so he sent the report. And so now it's been in the New York Times, it's been a national study. But it shows that our district, basically in our national comparison, that we are, that if you can look at the dot, we are up toward the top, we are at a point six, which is, I think, and let me look at my notes, because it is like a nearly half a grade level equivalent or better improvement in math. And so this shows our national comparison for math. And then it shows on the next slide where we compared with other states, other districts in North Carolina. And so in North Carolina, we have tied for third place with our rate of recovery with other school districts. So you can still see the little red dot and where we're falling compared to all those districts below us, and that's in recovery. If you look at, then reading nationwide comparison, we're also at a point five-three there. And so basically, that is a third of a grade level increase, which they said is huge in a year post-pandemic. And then you can see in the next slide as well where we are compared to North Carolina districts, and we were in second place for rate of recovery. So again, this was a national, this was not something that the state produced. It was something that was being done behind the scenes at the national level. But I will say, another data point that was exciting for us, we are number one in North Carolina for white and Hispanic student increases in reading scores, number two for black student increases in reading scores. So we break, as you all know, we track a lot of our data by race because we are trying to close achievement gaps. And so it's important that we track it. We're tied for second in North Carolina for black and Hispanic student increase in math scores, and fourth in the state for white students increases in math scores. So just to share that as we break down by race. So we are excited by that. Some, by the numbers data, and I think this is just to show you some of the operational numbers, this gives a look into the, from the beginning of the school year till January, how many lunches we've served, how many emails we've received, and that is not spam, how many assigned bus stops, how many visits to our website, and then how many square feet of we are maintaining with our buildings. And so just a little bit of a look in the day-to-day operations. Stakeholder feedback, we did this year what we called future-ready collabs. And in those collabs, we are trying to get folks kind of excited about the portrait of a graduate and why we're even embarking on the portrait. And so this is what the adults said about what we're needing and the students. And if you look at that, more voice, both said that, more personalized learning, interactive, relevant lessons, and preparation for post-secondary opportunities and mental and physical health. And so both adults and kids have said the same thing in those collabs. And we're getting ready to have a couple more the beginning of March. If any board members, I'll send you those dates. With teachers, we're doing one on March fifth, and with principals, we're going to do another one. And it basically takes our folks into, and I'll go to this slide, it takes them into like, what are we need to do to, what changes do we need to make in education to be ready for the future? And pretty much it takes them into hands-on conversations, and that actual produce some of that feedback that you just read. And so as the board knows, last March, we adopted the Portrait of a Graduate. You all adopted that in last spring. And so you're going to start seeing a lot more about this. It's driving everything we're doing at this point with instruction and with every other division as well. And so, and that's because we're trying to get to deeper learning. So we're talking a lot, as you'll see now and throughout the year and into next year, about the idea of deeper learning. And that's when we take the rigorous academic content, and we make sure that it's combined with cultivating skills, mindset, and literacy for students to become future-ready. And when we talk about future-ready, all it means is this, when kids walk out, when students walk out of our schools, can they demonstrate these durable skills listed up here, which are adopted by the state and our district at the highest levels? So can they demonstrate those skills? So this is really where we are now and as we're moving into the future. So just a little bit of data now related to goal one, which I just skipped quickly. I'm going to give you some whiplash real quick. Here we go. Raising student achievement, closing achievement gaps, enabling all students to take ownership of their learning. Some data to support that, we've had one thousand, one hundred teachers have completed their letters training, and we have a plan to sustain that. And that is all of our teachers in K-5 are actually, continue to be trained in the science of reading and in that letters training. That's really important. We have ninety-two tutors that are actually reading Warriors tutors that are supporting kindergarten and first grade students as we speak. When you look at extra money that we've brought into our district around student achievement, we have an innovative partnership grant that is eight point one million we received from the state, and that is supporting targeted schools. We've got a coding and mobile app grant that we've received for eighty thousand, a John Belk Endowment FAFSA completion. This is allowing us to work with our families so that we can help them with their FAFSA applications. And then Donors Choose, we've received about forty-eight thousand in individual teacher projects. So all of that is to support student achievement. With that, I'm going to share some data. Again, some of the data looks good and exciting, and some of it is like, okay, we've got to do better. And that's what we're, that is what our plans are right now. So if you look at the mid-year point in biology, and this is comparing last year mid-year to this year mid-year. Our students now will take the assessment again at the end of the year. So if we go up in these numbers, you know, the scores will be, could be higher at the end of the year. But biology, we had a positive change of three point seven. We went down in English two and Math one, and we went up in Math three by seven point seven-six. Our Math three, we're already beyond pre-pandemic levels with Math three. Everything else, we are not yet at beating pre-pandemic. But we have plans in place for both English and Math to get those numbers to be positive at the end of the school year. This is a lot of, this is a lot of data, the iReady. But here's what I want to point out with the iReady data, is that when you look at it, the third, fourth, and fifth grade, especially fourth and fifth, when we backtrack of when kids were learning how to read and when the pandemic started and all that, we're starting to see that improvement in fourth and fifth with fewer kids, more kids being proficient, more kids being on or above grade level, or at least in that window of early on grade level, and fewer in fourth and fifth being below grade level. And the concerning part about this is that the dark red is three plus years below grade level. And so this targeted work, the work we're doing around extended learning and giving schools money for tutoring, I think that's why I'm excited about this high dosage tutoring plan, is because it's a research study. And if we can prove the kind of tutoring that gets the best results, then we can replicate those models of tutoring. So I'm excited to be part of that research study. Sixth, middle school is a major concern for all of us. And there are specific plans for math and reading to address these scores, but this continues to be an... but this continues to be an area of concern when it comes to reading and to math. This is math, but it's the same thing in reading. When we go to reading, this is where you can see in third, fourth, fifth, as we think about our ninety-by-twenty-five, as I look at this, the second-grade class right now, this second-grade data, and this is mid-year data, so it's going to get better at the end of the year, but this will be the class next year on our ninety-by-twenty-five goal, is that second-grade class. They'll be in third grade next year. But this is, when you look at fourth and fifth, you can see we're moving in the right direction. It's not fast enough when you think about proficiency, but we're moving in the right direction. You can see, you know, in the percentage of third graders, over fifty percent right now, based on these numbers, would be either early or at or above grade level. If that were to stay true, because before pandemic, it was fifty-one percent of third graders at or above grade level. So, we're moving the needle to get to better-than-pre-pandemic scores. So, we're moving in the right direction with reading in elementary. And then again, in middle school, it's a concern. And so, again, we have plans in place to improve this data. Second half, course correct, what do we need to do better? Making sure that all of our schools are implementing their tutoring plans, which is what they received ELP funds for. If you look at DIBELS, this is a different assessment. So, it's measuring a little bit different than I-ready. But in this, you can also see it's mid-year to mid-year. Again, how did we do last year mid-year to this year? Now, I know it's a different group of kids, so this year's, you know, third graders would have been last year's second graders. But I still think it's important to see, are we making ground, you know, the next year using a common data point as far as when we're, what assessment we're using? And so, you can see here, we are improving, like, less students are in the well below, more students are at and above, when you look at, especially in second and third grade here. So, the data's starting to trend in the right direction when it comes to DIBELS as well. So, second goal is around equity access and acceleration. I'm not going to read the goal to you for time's sake. But Effie has been busy at work, as she shared with you earlier, in one of her, when she was sharing the diverse schools grant. But she also has implemented ninety-five Equity Ambassadors so that we have boots on the ground in every school supporting the shifts that we're trying to make in our schools. And so, this group of ninety-five, it's every school is represented, and they come together for regular training, and they're out in school supporting all of our efforts. Equity Plan was submitted to the state, and then the Blueprint. Effie has also started working with community members to design our Blueprint. So, as we make decisions, are we doing all of that with a lens of equity? Some of you may be attending some of those sessions, I'm not sure. But an Equity Blueprint will be part of our efforts moving forward. You can see here around inclusive practices, you all have been updated many times. But we have three schools that have been piloting, you've seen videos about that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. But that's something that is a major focus for ours, started. We have four years of implementation. This is kind of our first year where we're really seeing some impact of our inclusive practices work. Grants that we've received related to equity access and acceleration, you can see here, Effie spoke earlier about the fostering diverse schools grant, it's a planning grant. Arby's Lunch Debt, we were given thirty thousand dollars for lunch forgiveness. And also, the Brownsville Grant, we received earlier this year for seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand. So, here are some of our numbers for AP-IB courses. And again, this is this school year's numbers. So, beginning of school year till now, you can see some of our shifts in AP-IB of number of students that are enrolled in AP and IB courses. And then also, one that we're excited about, and we want to keep really advancing, and that is our college and career promise, our students that are in dual enrollment classes. That is, can be a game-changer for some of our students and their families. And so, we want to continue to increase these numbers on this page. And the next one's about CTE. And I had sent the board something that showed middle and high together. We took out, it was very concerning, because we know with all the pathways, we are, and everyone in the room, as we were looking at this data together, we're like, that can't be right, because high school, it's more. Middle school has declined in numbers of students. There is less choice in middle school, because you're either taking the CTE class or the arts class or whatever, but we still want to figure out. Enrollment's gone down in middle school altogether, so we're trying to figure out why that's gone down. But high school numbers have actually gone up with kids in our CTE classes. You can look at some of our expanded pathways this year, with agriculture, cybersecurity, project management, and teaching as a profession. And so, and the world of work was a big hit this year that I think is just going to continue to gain momentum. Community engagement, one that is not on here, just so you all know, we'll celebrate it in two weeks, but Brent and his team, his amazing team, just won forty-four awards Friday at a state communications event. And so, you'll hear, is that right, forty-four, right Brent? You will hear so much more about that in two weeks, we'll celebrate that. But you can see the numbers of increases for volunteers, Facebook followers, community partners. You can see the pluses are how many more this year at this time compared to last year at this time. And so, we continue to try to bring more people into our district, both partners, volunteers. We've highlighted sixty-eight schools. And our faces of WSFCS, if you follow that on social media, we've gotten fourteen-thousand-five-hundred views on that. And that's just honestly spotlighting two employees every day. And so, it's very exciting. Talent development, this is another one that we're seeing some exciting things. You can see all the employees that have on-boarded. I'd love to get to where we don't have to onboard, you know, twelve-hundred-and-fifty-seven employees during the year, because that means we didn't lose any, if we could stop onboarding. But the good news is, we're still hiring and we're filling those vacancies. We've been at that ninety-five percent fill rate all year, which I think, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about a hundred instructional, is that about right, about a hundred instructional vacancies that we've been at for most of the year? A really exciting percent is that ninety-two percent of the teachers who exceeded student growth have stayed in our district. And that's a really, that's a good number, because those are teachers really having a high level of impact with kids, staying, ninety-two percent of them. And you can see our child nutrition, our driver vacancies, where they were at the beginning of the year, where they are now. And then, this is very exciting, opportunity culture. We have continued to increase the numbers of schools participating in opportunity culture. We literally just got forty thousand more dollars to add ten more schools for next school year. But this is where multi-classroom leaders are being utilized at schools in all these different roles. What I will say about this is, this is the future. And that is where your people in your buildings are the ones developing capacity of people in your buildings. That is the future, when you have ownership of improvement on your campus, it makes the world of difference. And then you can see on the right-hand side, all of the data around talent development, teacher residency, our transition to teach graduates, we just, we have eleven graduating this spring. National Board is up, teachers becoming certified. So, good stuff within talent development that's happening. We started our DRIVE for First Sight Task Force. We had our first meeting, and that is honestly to continue the work of the state DRIVE Task Force. We have our own local DRIVE Task Force now, that is thirty-nine community members, school people, just working to continue to increase diversity of our talent. You can see some compensation that we've given out this year. We have three-point-nine million that's been given out to thirty-one-hundred employees as part of our transformation bonuses. You can see our T-Slip bonuses, which is federal grant, bonuses we've given, again, to employees at schools. And then you can see our state bonuses that have gone to teachers and principals. So, lots of additional dollars are going to schools, to people, especially in our schools, in our Tier Two and Three schools. Climate and culture, this is the last one. And this is all things, you can see on here, around inclusive, safe climate. And so, you heard a little bit earlier about the panorama, which I'll do another data point tonight. But PD, this is information about work we've done around the code and restorative practices training, mental health support. You can see that all psychologists, social workers, and counselors have been trained in suicide behavior threat analysis. And we've all completed our first course of trauma-resilient communities training, which is part of our mental health plan. You can see student attendance, forty-six percent of students have a ninety-five percent or higher attendance rate. So, we have a twelve percent decrease in chronically absent students from last year at this time. So, chronic absenteeism, every time I open a new journal, article, online or anything, it's all about chronic absenteeism and what a problem it is. So, the fact that we have a twelve percent decrease is good news. We have that whole Attendance Matters campaign that continues, and we're really working hard to have kids in school. When they like coming to school, they come to school more. That's a novel concept. You like coming, you're going to come more. Our six-to-ten-day suspensions have decreased. As you can see, fifty percent decrease from last year at this time to this year. You can see with safety and climate, you can see how many Say Something reporting tips that we've had this year, how many metal detections we've done, firearms on campus. We had one student earlier this year and one not. I think it was someone, that adult that had it, one on campus during an open house back in September. And so, then you can see our standard response protocol. I do think our new standard response is really working. Panorama, you can see you already went over panorama, so I'll just skip right through the panorama data, because you've already spent that whole time talking about it. You can see on this one, we actually compared fall to spring, because I'm hoping now in spring, it's better than fall. It's like, I think it should keep getting better. I understand the whole idea about fall to fall, spring to spring, but to me, it should just keep getting better. Like, this spring, because of all we're doing, should be even better. And so, that's, to me, that's why we're comparing fall to spring. And we come back again, I want, we'll compare spring again. So, where are we going next, February to June and beyond? You can just see some of the things we're doing. We are actually visiting Henrico, it's not Henrico, it's Enrico, right Tommy? Enrico. That is a school district that is really further than us with their portrait work and all things deeper learning. And so, we're going to be visiting that district and learning from their practices. We are going to do more around launching the portrait, you're going to start seeing it everywhere in our district. We have more collabs coming for student achievement. We've got plans for English II, Math I, and middle, school reading and math. We've got very targeted support plans for students. You can see in equity work, we are already recruiting students for twenty-four, twenty-five for AP classes, for dual enrollment classes, we're already thinking about next school year. And the Equity Blueprint is still under construction and will be completed in the next few months. You can see with community engagement, there is a community group working with us, community members to help more with literacy. You're going to hear more about Books on Break, where we're hoping to send books home with our students in our targeted schools, Tier Three schools. So, kids have books while they're away from school. You could see all of our recruitment fairs are about to start coming, we're going to continue. We're hiring now for next year, as we're focusing on continuing improvement this year. And then you could see our universal strategies. We have a walkthrough tool now that's being used to track how we're doing with the implementation of the code. We're going into schools, we have twelve schools that we're going into, and actually looking at how are things going, meeting with teachers, meeting with students, meeting with staff, to see how that implementation's going. In addition, in February, at the end of February, we're doing a mass survey to teachers about the training they've had up till now with the code, how has it been? What are their, is it helping them with their classroom management? And just giving us some really good feedback as we continue to try to make improvements with the code work. And then you can see trauma-resilient communities training, we're going to all be doing our second segment that's come out, it's all virtual, and so, we'll all be taking part in that. And then the last thing I want to share, last slide, is tomorrow, we will go live with a public-facing dashboard. I know I have shared this with you all already, but it's ready to go live, and that would include achievement data, discipline data, attendance data, enrollment data, and panorama data, so that public can actually see the data. They already can see most of those data points on our website, but now it'll actually be able to be, you know, manipulated. So, if you wanted to do a comparison of three schools now, you could actually do that now. It's a true, like, public-facing dashboard. So, that'll be going live, and what is February 4th? I think that meant to be 14th, no? Is tomorrow the 14th? Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. We're going to give you the gift of data, online, in the form of a dashboard. So, that's it, that's it, yes.
If you go back to student achievement, and the slide that says where we are, student achievement?
I think it's an error there.
Where, which one?
For Math III. That should be a negative, unless they have transposed the numbers.
On this one?
Math III.
So, twenty, yeah, so twenty-two, so in twenty-three, oh yeah, that should be the other way around. That should be the other way around.
Oh, it should be the other way around?
It should be the forty-nine, that we went up seven points. So, that should be, yeah, thank you for catching that. I think I reviewed this fifteen times and haven't caught that, thank you for that, yes.
I'm curious to know, what were the strategies used to get our attendance decrease? Because I'm concerned about how we've used our extra dollars and putting people in place to target attendance, and now we may be losing some of that. I'm just curious what the strategies we're using for that.
Yeah, I do know, so social workers are a huge part, I know that's what you're talking about, are a huge part of our attendance efforts. But it's kind of, it's all-encompassing, it's that group that kind of leads the charge with that, but it's everything schools are doing. It's the Attendance Campaign, it's talking about Attendance Matters, it's making sure kids are connected, it's following up on when kids start to kind of need help, and you start to see that someone's starting to be absent, it's like all those interventions that you start putting into place. I don't know if, Frederica, did I sum that up pretty well? So, every school will continue, even with some decrease in social work. That is still, has always been part of that, the work of the social work and that whole Student Services team is really attendance. So, I don't see, it's going to continue even with some of the elimination of some of the positions.
I hope so, because I know we really had a community focus, and we had people going out, boots on the ground, going and knocking on doors. And I hope that we can find a way to continue that, even though there may be a lack of funding. Because I think that really makes the difference. The second thing I would like to see more information on is the eighth-grade reading program, because I've got some ideas on that.
That would be great.
Because when you have an eighth grader.
Third grade level. And so, yes, the strategy needs to be different. I think in two weeks, is it two weeks, Paula, where are you? In two weeks, we're doing all things literacy as an update. And so, you're going to hear about all the strategies at the different levels. So, you're right, what, you know, we can't use the same strategies, I think we're going to get different results. So, yes, Paula will be sharing an update.
Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, just one question about community engagement. Do we have an update from our educational foundation, as far as their fundraising efforts?
Yeah, I met with Marilyn and Carol a few weeks ago, and we did not, I cannot remember what they said the balance was, but they were about to give that first group of grants out to our teachers that had applied. But I don't know the balance, we'll find that out.
And I don't want to, I heard it, but I don't want to quote it right now, so we'll make sure.
You heard it, oh, because you were at the board meeting.
I was at the meeting.
Okay. The board meeting was the same night as parent advisory or something, so I couldn't go to the board meeting. So, but yeah, so we'll get that information to the board, and maybe we'll do another update soon with the foundation.
Any other comments? Thank you very much, a lot of work is being done in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is action items. First, consider approval of the university instructors' contract and accept funding from CTIP. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the appropriation of the security grant funding. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Barr and Board Member Watts. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the summer program retesting, which was briefed in the full board on January 23rd, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? So, we have seven in favor, two opposed, motion passes. Next, consider approval of the Reynolds Auditorium carpet and lighting contract, which was briefed in June 13th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So approved.
I'm sorry.
I move, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Brown Gaither, and have a second by Board Member Watts. Any further discussion?
Just a question, where, is this funding coming from the Friends Group or from our budget?
I asked that question as well in Agenda Review, and I'm not sure, never.
Lauren's coming up.
This is the funding from grants and from money raised by the Friends of Reynolds.
Okay. Okay.
We'll be sure to thank them, then.
Yes, we will. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. And all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Bolton Kitchen Renovation Architectural Design Contract, Next, consider approval of the Bolton Kitchen Renovation Architectural Design Contract, which is briefed in the Building and Grounds Committee on September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, and January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by vice chair Bohannon, and a second by board member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Hall Woodward Restroom Renovation Architectural Design Contract, which was briefed in Buildings and Grounds Committee on September twenty-ninth, and then again on January eleventh. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by board member Coon, a second by vice chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider the approval of the West Forsyth Canopies Engineering Design Contract, briefed in Buildings and Grounds Committee on September twenty-ninth and on January eleventh. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by board member Miller, a second by board member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider the approval of the Walker Town High School's Title One Funding for Educational Resource Group Contract. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by board member Crowley, a second by board member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Okay, that looks unanimous. Thank you. That concludes our action. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
I forgot since I just did that. Sorry, you're hearing a lot from me this evening, but this will be quick, this will be quick. So just wanted to, to shout out Black History Month. We have such great things happening all over, and I know every year I say that, you know, this, it definitely should not be one month out of the year that we're celebrating the great contributions of, of African Americans in our community and in, in our country as a whole. But this month is very special, and so much is happening, so I hope that board members are getting invited to different events and are able to attend next. February is also love the bus month, so just a big shout out to our entire transportation team. They work so hard, and every night I, I look forward to getting that all buses are parked sign, and it seems to be getting earlier and earlier. So good job to our transportation team who work so hard every day. Random Acts of Kindness Week actually started this week, and so we are, we've given materials to all of our schools and district staff, and we are all about doing acts of kindness this week. And you know what? There's so much research about what that does for your, your own mental health, so exciting times. Teacher residency, this was exciting. I know the other night that Steve and I were talking about this, because, about teacher residency and being able to give our own licensure, and how amazing that is. We are one of three districts in the state, and so this just shows you that we completed, our first cohort just completed their first semester. A surprise patrol accepted nineteen new candidates, I sent you all that video, and it's just exciting that we're able to actually license our own teachers here. It's great. College Lift, this past weekend, I was able to attend College Lift. This is an incredible partnership with Forsyth Tech that I really did not know all the details about, to be honest with you, until I attended. Ninety students are selected every year starting in sixth grade, and they go from sixth through twelfth grade. They attend twenty-one Saturday sessions per year. Their parents attend, I think the parents attend fifteen sessions, but students who complete the seven-year program can go to college for free, and it's amazing. Well, do you know that our first cohort is graduating? We have eleven students, and this all started with the pandemic. We have eleven students that actually did that, seven years, twenty-one Saturdays, and their parents were there Saturday, and I got to talk to their parents. Many, these are all first generation collegegoers. It's just, it's so exciting. I wanted to highlight this. Thank you to Forsyth Tech, they are doing, working so hard, and they're an incredible partner. Prom event, I don't know if anyone got to see this, but we have community members, oh gosh, what is the community member's name that?
Christine Bland.
Christine Bland, who kicked this off for us, so thank you to Christine and all the volunteers who made this possible. The good news is, is that we are going to store all these dresses and continue collecting them, and we're going to have an actual site on our, in our district to be able to continue this great work, because our students have needs, and this allows them to go to prom and not have to worry about the expense of, of a dress.
Yeah, and it's tuxedos, too.
And tuxedos.
And they get to keep them.
Yeah, which is great.
It's really amazing.
So more to come about that. And last but not least, Early Start. So I said that every board meeting, I was going to bring you a very quick update about Early Start, and so just to let you know, next week, on Monday, we are going to be releasing an FAQ, and that FAQ will have everything you can imagine. There's just a sample of questions to the right, but we're going to be answering everything about how we're going to be a coding attendance at the beginning of the year.